And get started. Uh, welcome everybody here. And I don't know if everybody knows it, but this is Mr. Orson's last meeting. You'd like to say anything, Howard?
Really enjoy it. Really having job working with y'all.
How many years have you served?
Twenty six, twenty six years.
Twenty six. Half a life.
Okay.
Really appreciate you being on here anticipating.
Thank you very much.
Covering your district.
Thank you.
Certainly have a quorum. Um, on the agenda, we'll probably get the minutes, old business. And then when we hit new business, we'll open for on a special exemption permit and then open for a public hearing. And we'll finish up with the two amendments. Now that somebody likes something different than that. If not, moving on to the minutes, what's your pleasure on November twenty second? Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of making no mistake and I oppose same sign. You'll notice in your agenda, the old business on the rezoning of last month. With Mr. Ms. Walker from RR three to R ten has been withdrawn and there's a copy of that. Therefore. So we will not take that up next month. I think it was on a sixty day. Uh, before we revisit it. Been on in the new business. Holly, you want to speak to the special exemption permit?
Okay, Amelia Energy Facility LLC is requesting a special exception permit to construct a utility scale solar farm on fourteen parcels in the county totaling one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three acres. The proposed solar farm is located in the Porhaus Road, Buckskin Creek Road, West Creek Road, and Dennisville Road area. The applicants have stated and the site thing reflects that panels will only be placed on a maximum of eight hundred acres. The remainder of the acreage will be used for setbacks and buffers. The applicants will be required to retain a minimum one hundred foot setback from all roads and a fifty foot setback on the sides and rear. Um, in response to Mr. Whittington's question at the last meeting, um, the applicants have stated that approximately one hundred and sixteen acres will be converted from existing ag fields into panels. Per the twenty seventeen comprehensive plan, this project's located in the rural preservation area. Chapter five of the document discusses the future land use plan for the rural agricultural preservation area in which the project is proposed. The plan states that the intention of this area is to promote existing farming, agricultural industry and companion land uses to include utility scale solar energy systems and other green energy generation systems. The comprehensive plan was amended in twenty nineteen to specifically include this goal. And if approved, this project directly aligns with the intention of the future land use plan. The applicants have also included in their application several other goals of the comprehensive plan that they feel this project achieves. These include avoiding historical sites, controlling residential growth, providing significant tax revenue, maintaining road quality, and providing revenue to the county without requiring any county services. As outlined in article thirty-four of the zoning ordinance, if approved, this special exception permit will contain thirty-two conditions. They're all listed in your books, but I'll hit the highlights. They'll have to comply with the building and electrical codes. They will have to be located with, not located within one mile of the village development area, which they're not. Um, they will have to meet the primary setbacks or fifty feet, whichever is greater. So it would be one hundred feet from the roads and fifty feet on the other sides. The solar energy system and equipment cannot exceed twenty-five feet in height. Lighting shall be limited to the minimum necessary and show me all requirements of the ordinance. No utility scale solar sys- energy system can be installed until evidence has been provided to the county that the owner has been approved by the utility company to interconnect. The energy system will have to be enclosed by security fence, not less than six feet in height. And the entire facility, including the fencing, will be screened from ground level view of adjacent properties by a landscape buffer of at least twenty-five feet wide. Appropriate warning signage and a nine-on-one address will be posted in a clearly visible manner. Lead control and mowing will be performed in accordance with an approved site management plan. And panels shall be repaired or replaced when invisible disrepair. Condition number five about the setbacks, the applicants are requesting an amendment to the fifth condition that states that the primary setbacks for the underlying zoning district must be met. The applicants will maintain the setbacks plus additional landscaping and distance along the perimeter of the project, but would like to build panels across the interior property lines. The zoning ordinance requires a forty-foot side setback in RP five and a twenty-foot side setback in RR three. But due to the nature of the project, the applicants would like to build within the site, the side building setback and construct panels across property lines. This is common in other localities. And being that the project in the least run with the land, I don't perceive that this request being problematic. Um, however, if you make a motion tonight, we'll need to include that as well if you all are willing to make that concession. But that's all I have, but Sam and Wes with Torch Clean are here as well to answer any questions that you guys have.
Any commission member have any comment or question if people welcome to public here? I assume you explaining the, the last one there about the um, cross property lines. In other words, it's just like one big track instead of.
Yeah, instead of meeting the setback on each individual parcel, the contiguous parcels with panels would be filled across the property.
And then also the question I had was the signage is just going to be at every entrance. The only place?
Yes, it would have to be at every entrance.
I assume that's three or four, somewhere three or four entrances, right? Four?
It'll be maximum of four.
Maximum.
Probably be the last one to listen to this.
Anyone have any questions before we open the public here? If none, I'll open the public here. We'll stand, you can stand up, come to the front, state your name and address. I won't put your time on, but I'm going to limit it to five minutes. If someone follows you, there's a head of you, the same thing, just agree with them. We may have a lot of people speaking tonight and we don't need to run it too awful long. Do you have any more questions? Just ask them, but I'll be pretty stern on that. Who would like?
We do have one person joining us on that next. I'm not sure if she wants to speak, but.
Do you want to speak, ma'am?
I'm fine right at the moment.
Okay.
And I did get one email. Mr. Harvey, based on past experience, you and the board of supervisors are about to be inundated with correspondence and calls from the local NIMBYs regarding the proposed solar farm in the West Creek, Buckskin, Porhaus Road area. I would just like to go on record as a resident of West Creek Road that I'm one hundred percent in favor of it. And that is from Sharon paper, paper. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone like to speak? Just state your name and address. We have to keep everything for record.
Patricia Riches, twelve five one five Fort Worth Road. Okay, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you very much for your service to Amelia. I'd like to start off by giving you a little bit of my background. Uh, I've been a project manager for Environmental Technologies in Richmond. They are not no longer in business, but I was a project manager for them for Virginia. And I held a license for Kentucky for them as well to do bidding. I also worked on projects like Ford Story down in Virginia Beach and Camden Yards. Uh, recently I worked at the General Defense Supply Center where they had that cleanup with the spill over there. The uh, always has to be progress, no matter where you are, you have to have progress or you die. Uh, take a look at our payroll system and it weren't up and coming and couldn't, just couldn't keep up. Um, and there's been many things that have happened there, so I'm not against progress at all. Sometimes, uh, we must do that in order to survive. Man is a very capable of being. And, uh, we've shown many times that we can take change and apply it the right way and make it work. I believe in it. Uh, that when we do that change, it has to be for the betterment of man in a progressive manner. But when and only when it's for an improvement of mankind. I'm sure that all of us here and Amelia will agree with that. That we have to change, uh, so that we can thrive for the better. In order to do that, we have to be careful in our thought. That's what I'm going to be asking you to do tonight and the knowledge of what we will be here. Um, and more importantly, how we, how would it impact the community, not only today, but in the future? Okay, um, I did not expect any one of us here tonight that's going to say anything that's going to sway you one way or the other. What I am here tonight to do is to give you some information, okay? Having a management my entire life and without a good plan, without the knowledge of what you need to make that decision, it, it could turn out very, very badly. Um, case in point, take a look at our current administration. I don't expect to, well, I do have some information for you tonight, but I've got in a folder. Some of this information here, um, you can find on the web. Some of it has already been taken down because it's anti-soul. So with you, everything I'm going to give you has references, credits, documentation. It's not hearsay, it's not hyperbole, it's not anecdotal, it's facts, pure facts. So that's what we need to base our decision on is the facts of what we're doing here. And I want to repeat what we do here tonight and in the future, if it goes to the board of directors, will impact Amelia for a long time. Will not only affect us here, but it'll affect our children and our grandchildren. So what I would like to do is ask two things. Number one, that you reach out to the community, people in this room, baby, and form a group, an investigative group for what the downside of solar is. We're going to know what the upside is. The company's going to have all that for us. And we would need, really need to know is what is the downside? Not what people think, but what has been proven and what are facts? So the things that I've got here are for that. And the only other thing I would ask is that you take these, I only made one copy because it's quite extensive. And if you could make copies for yourself, kind of some out, that would be great. Anybody wants them, that'd be fine. Um, so if I could leave this with someone, would that be okay? So the reason I, I make that, uh, thing about knowledge and choice. I've had the opportunity to live all over the United States and, um, back in nineteen ninety, I chose Virginia to be my home, to bring my family to live and to thrive. And we love it here. And I often tell people, once you come to Virginia, you'll never leave. But poor decisions can have implications for many, many years. And I think all we need to do is look to the east, who are opening county over there and see what the results of greed and poor planning will result in. So please give it good thought. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Kenny Martin, six thousand five Dennisville Road. I want to say right up front, I'm not against solar farms as such. The main thing I'm against is taking prime agricultural land out of production and using it for solar farm. Solar farms can be put on land that is not suitable for agriculture. And that's my main concern. Appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Robbie Parsons, fifty-eight ninety-two West Creek Road. I agree with what Kenny said. Plus, what is this going to do for land value? You know, this, these panels are going to be right against me, right against me. I'll drive right next to them every day. What's that going to do for my land value and the people across the road? Uh, it's a huge feeling in front of my house. If any of my kids or grandkids ever want to develop it to build a house there, what's it going to do? Uh, there's, there's a lot of questions. Wildlife, what you going to do to the wildlife? We got deer, turkeys, rabbits, squirrels. What you going to be? See a bird fly over there every now and then? Don't think so. Uh, I don't think y'all think, but y'all want this on your driveway, right to your back door. That's where it's going to be on me. But again, like Kenny said, agricultural property is disappearing big time.
Is this run right?
Right beside my driveway, right behind my.
You have to drive by in and out.
Every day. Well, I support it, you know, yeah. Uh, you don't mind, I can't support you on this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Jay Groves, one seven three four one Cross Road. Um, I want to first say I support property rights and folks being able to use their property for the way it's zoned, way the, way it's permitted, those kind of things. Also want to say about the landowners of this particular project that they're, um, been good citizens and they've been great neighbors for as long as I've known them, which is my whole life. Um, so I want to start with that. There are some things I, I just want us to think about as we're doing this. Um, I'm glad to see that the official documents call this a solar development, not a solar farm. Popular media calls it a farm a lot and there's some significant differences. And I think they're worth mentioning. I know you guys have already had a couple of these, so I hope this isn't too redundant, but, um, you know, farms provide, somebody mentioned habitat for wild animals. Um, solar developments are fenced in, chain link fence, manicures areas. So all that habitat is lost. So there's significant habitat loss there. Um, a lot of steel, a lot of concrete, a lot of chain link, so just not good for, for wildlife. Um, another aspect, economic change that, that this will bring about. Uh, farms require inputs, feed, seed for lizer, parts for equipment, that sort of thing. And most of that economic activity happens locally and regionally. So, um, and unlike even if it was a, um, housing development, you know, then you have inputs like plumbers and electricians and carpenters. But not only with this kind of development, this is more of an industrial development and a power plant. So that kind of economic activity, that's local, regional economic activity, uh, is impacted in a negative way. Um, and the profits on the farm go to the farmer who again rolls that back in and creates that economic activity locally and regionally. Uh, with a corporation like this, that's not a local corporation, those profits are going to be leaving the county, uh, and, and not roll back into our economic process. Um, the other concerns I have about, uh, uh, the project or the construction issues. Um, it's going to be a lot of timber clearing, so a lot of log trucks in and out of there. Huge, huge amount of property at once. I know we, we have people clearing property and logging and that sort of thing all the time. But this is going to be a big chunk of land all at one time. And done, I'm suspecting at a pace that's more rapid than is typical when you're just logging some land because they're getting ready for construction. I'm expecting that. So the, the number of log trucks going up and down the road in the course of a day, I think it's going to be significant. And then once they get that done, the concrete trucks, the, I assume tractor trailer bringing in steel. Um, there are a lot of the roads around this area. Got some very narrow sections and some very steep hills, line curves. So I think there needs to be some consideration on that traffic impact on those roads and what, how it's going to impact the citizens driving up and down those roads. So, um, a couple of suggestions I have for conditions that, that might offset some of this. As far as the economic activity, um, given a project this size, maybe we need to look at, uh, them providing a visitor center or some kind of driving tour of the project. So maybe some tourists will come in, look at this project and, and put some of that economic activity back on the county. Um, and then, uh, maybe a transportation study involving V-DOT, just to look at those roads that are going to be used as we're, as the project is going on. So, you know, if a tractor trailer and a big concrete truck meet on the road, I'd pay for them to slap mirrors when they go by each other. So I think there's some, some parts of these roads are narrow enough that'll probably happen, so. That's what I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grove.
My name is Randy Robertson. Actually don't live in this area. I live at sixteen nine fifty Amelia Avenue. But I attend the church and I'm an elder at the church at Rennie Memorial Presbyterian Church. And I'm also the president of the cemetery association. And, uh, I just, I would really appreciate it if anything they could do about moving it back away from the church and the cemetery just a little bit. I'm not totally against progress. I know it has to happen. And I know it will aid a lot of people and it'll aid the county possibly and, and the county government itself. I think you, you know, you go out to that cemetery to lay your loved ones down for the last time and all you see out there is shining metal. You know, I don't think that's a very pleasing sight. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Come on ahead, man. Thank you. Give me a chance to stand up.
Hi, Teresa Busey, one eight seven eight one Porhaus Road. Um, this development is coming right up against our property line. Uh, we're, we're about three hundred feet from our, um, outdoor living area where we spend a lot of time. And it doesn't look like this very much buffer. It's going to come, when we sit on our back patio, we're going to be looking at, at solar panels. Um, you know, we bought land in a residential area and, um, now it's going to be like living in an industrial area. Basically, it's, there's going to be, um, like Jay said, there's going to be traffic, there's signage. Um, it's just changing the whole landscape. It's, it's not going to be a residential area. Um, uh, so it's why we say concerned about the wildlife. I mean, we have bears, coyotes, bobcat, fox. There's a ton of wildlife back there and there's two creeks with limestone each side. Um, and, and you're going to be running these solar panels right up to these creeks. Um, what the development's going to do to, to the creeks and, and then just, you know, the animals are not going to be able to live there. Um, and, and what's going to happen to the waste when this is all over with? I mean, there doesn't seem to be a lot of options as far as recycling the panels or, um, you know, yes, thirty or forty years, I'm not going to be here probably, but my grandkids will be, um, one day. You know, hopefully they'll, they'll own the place that we bought and built. And, um, you know, what are they going to have to look at abandoned solar panels that, that aren't functional anymore or that they don't have anything to dispose of? So that's another concern. And as Jay said, just all the traffic, I mean, Porhaus Road is a crooked winding road. Um, and, and looking at log trucks, cement trucks, you know, all these big trucks. It's barely ring for two cars to me. So those are just, those are my concerns. Uh, you know, I understand it's people's land and they want to do what they want to do with it, but it does impact those of us who, you know, we're a third of a mile off the road. And so the hundred foot buffer is not going to come into play because there's no road. So it's going to come right up to our property line. There's, the picture shows solar panels right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Busey.
My name is Robert Quarter Bradshaw. From the Quarter family of Amelia County. Way back some years ago, grandpa died in eighty, um, in twenty-four in a tornado. I'm grandson of Louis Jackson Quarter and Robert, no, James Fulton Quarter. I own land. It's, um, uh, it says it's a tax map here. I loaned, I own, it's in sixty-three acres of ten-year-old pines right now. And I'm concerned about the value of my land, like the gentleman spoke earlier. And I'm also concerned about the, um, residents of Amelia County. At the bottom of this letter, it says, "The mission of the board of supervisors to pro- to provide open, responsive leadership for the county of Amelia and improve the quality of life for all citizens, all citizens." And you heard from some of the citizens tonight. I've had very little time to prepare for this meeting and I am very nervous, but I am so glad to be here with, uh, people that have had time to prepare. Um, I appreciate that I got a letter, um, from Holly and I called and y'all don't have a sign up thing, but I would be glad that you didn't because I didn't want to go first. What I did do was I found some information that may be valuable to y'all from several different sources across the state. Charlie Bensley is a board member supervisor, she's a board, she's a supervisor of the board of supervisors in Bedford County. She's, she wrote my wife a memo this morning and said, "Bledrop Agriculture Committee is against solar farms." For one, they said that solar companies are using the word farm and harvesting to get the government benefits and ag land. The farmers in benefits in Bedford are concerned about the water table and rainwater not absorbed in the ground. I'm concerned about the rainwater runoff. Um, I'll get to Louisa County here in a minute. In Campbell County, solar industrial facilities and is causing runoff and road deterioration. And someone over here talked about the roads. I think the lady that just spoke talked about the roads and the narrow roads and, and just how about some deterioration about those roads. Then that would even be more concerned. They're concerned about the money in the escrow account to remove the unwanted solar farms. The money won't be enough to remove them. And someone already spoke on that point about what are we going to do there? This, these people have already seen that the escrow money won't be enough to remove the stuff that's left. There's also a concern, who will recycle the material? Uh, will, and if it's left in the ground, that's not going to be much. There was a recording and a transcript of a news article on WTVR that was dated ten five twenty-one this year entitled, "How Virginia Forests Claim Dominion Is Destroying Their Land." Okay. In Louisa County, the board of supervisors has formed a utility scale solar development commi- uh, committee which has already recommended against the development of future solar projects which do not demonstrate significant commitment to thoughtful development and enhanced protection of surrounding resources. So a gentleman said earlier, maybe y'all want to, uh, get a committee together so that they can study this. Um, I didn't get much information, but a little bit that I have, we're going to practice getting it together for y'all as quickly as possible. Longevity is, was one of these guys was, uh, talking about this particular problem about the solar farms. And someone says it's not exactly a farm. We're asking folks to bet the farm on a forty-year experiment. No utility scale facility has been around long enough to assess its feasibility. So to think about it. So, to think about it. Are there any two solar farms here already in Amelia?
Two, one on each side of me right now.
I thought it was down, I thought they were, I thought I saw one down on Genito Road, close to...
It is. Just off Genito.
My, my son lives down in that area, and he said I wasn't right. Here's, here's a construction issue that I'm not sure that we have talked about. Reengineering, reengineering this land. No one was expecting the massive movement of earth. The thirteen thousand acres of cropland in Amelia County will never be able to produce. That's something to think about. I believe a gentleman mentioned that because we're damaging the land. Hey, I just ask you all to consider rejecting this permit.
Does this solar farm touch your property? Come up to your property, you said you had sixty-three acre? Or is it between there? I'm just trying to, you know, peel forward.
I think there is a six, six-foot easement between William Scott's land and my timber.
Okay, that's all.
Call John Quarter and ask John if that, because he'll, he'll, he'll tell you. It's, it's right across. I didn't bring the map. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Speakers?
Hello, Martin Conkle, one six two eleven Church Street. You've heard from a lot of neighbors of that area. I'm not from the West Creek area. I'm here in the village. There's been a lot of stuff, you know, EMF radiation, stuff like that. It's kind of out there. But I totally get, I was going with the man over there looking at the land plan and the plan. That really is up in his yard. Like, that's pretty close. There's not much of a buffer there. Understand, you know, these laws will make it great, and there is some benefit to the county as far as tax revenue goes. But I can also understand that if these things are literally out your back door, that's a major concern. Is the tax revenue that we're going to get off of this as a county worth doing that to our fellow neighbors and citizens of Amelia County? What's the cost-benefit analysis? Maybe there's a middle ground here. Maybe it doesn't have to be extreme though, or an extreme, you put these panels right up in somebody's backyard. Maybe we need to go back to the drawing board and do more buffer zones. Maybe there needs to be more support and more benefit to this county if you want to come into this county and use this county and be a part of this community. I think the way it is, it's bad. It's bad for these neighbors. It's bad for the people of the area. There's not much benefit to the county. But I think there is opportunity. There's opportunity, obviously, for you guys to make a lot of money. That's, that's what you're doing. That's cool. There could also be a lot of opportunity for the citizens in this county to benefit off of this from revenue, tax revenue, and maybe not the way that damages the property values, the views, and the wildlife so much, other people, the West Creek area. I looked at the plan extensively. I thought it's, it's not a good one. Really, it's these, these people do have some serious concerns, and, and I feel for them, certainly like the man I was talking to earlier. I think this really needs to go back to the drawing board and we should figure out something that helps everybody. I think there is a middle ground here. I think we can all do well and benefit off of this, but not, not the way it is. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Sam Williams, and I hear from Torch Clean Energy. I just wanted to kind of say a few things, offer a few responses. This project site really is in a very remote area. We obviously do have neighbors. I think most of those neighbors are, you know, pine trees. We've reached out to a lot of neighbors, and we've actually changed the layout where we thought there was a direct line of sight. There are places where, you know, there's a hundred feet of pine trees that we would plan on maintaining. And, and I really don't think in those cases we would be at all visible to those neighbors. You know, some of the comments are kind of related to construction, you know, the delivery of equipment, erosion and sediment controls. And, you know, on a different project, my company is, we're seeding the ground now to avoid, you know, problems with opening up a lot of land. So we find solutions to make construction better. It's not good for anybody, you know, if there's a problem with that. Some of the other projects mentioned, they were on very steep, like very steep terrain, kind of farther west. And, you know, there is some slope on this site, but we were kind of starting with a lot of land because we don't want to have to grade any land to put in the solar panels. And I don't expect that we will. And that's kind of one reason why we picked the site. You know, in terms of, in terms of logging, you know, a lot of this is timber. Again, I think only about a hundred acres, or I think a hundred and forty is cropland that would be used for the project. So most of this is, you know, not cropland. But we're working with landowners, and a lot of that land is actually being timbered now as part of a regular cycle. So we're, you know, with the construction piece, we want to set ourselves up for success. And we're not, you know, going to have eight hundred acres cleared, you know, all at once. And we're going to work on that. But again, happy to address any questions. I guess there's a few public comment. We'll continue, but happy to address specific questions.
On the solar panels, have you done any studies of the chromium that would run off the panels, dissolve from the panels into the groundwater, possibly into all the water, including the lakes that's surrounding them?
You said chromium?
Chromium.
There's no chromium in any of the panels that we would use?
Well, I don't know what kind of panels you're using, but my information is that there's chromium runoff.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, the panels set up any, like, there's no hazardous materials that would run off.
So you haven't done any studies about what, what, what brought off from the rain on those panels?
I mean, nothing runs off. There's no liquid in the panels. They're covered in glass.
Okay, so if I was to provide you with that information, would you, would you be willing to do environmental thesis study on that?
Happy to read anything you provide.
A lot of the guy said the panel looks all, bunch noise.
The sound direction, the panels don't make any noise.
Put it in leather, it's not correct.
The panels don't make any noise. I think the only thing in the project that makes noise are the inverters. And those are about the size of a refrigerator, and they'd be at least five hundred feet in is what converts it to...
How many inverters will be added?
You got about one inverter for every thirty acres. So you probably have about thirty inverters kind of at different parts of the project.
One inverter for every thirty acres?
Yes.
How many acres do you plan on using?
Maximum of seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty acres.
For panels, yes.
For panels.
How many, can I say panels? Four panels. How many total panels would you plan on putting up? I don't have, I don't have the exact number of panels. I could, I could get you that.
But you don't have the exact number of inverters either?
No, there's a range, but not the exact number. It, it, you know, you may have, panels might differ in capacity by a little bit. You may need a little bit more, a little bit less. It's the same with inverters. But nothing would be, the project would not make any noise once it's constructed. The, the only thing that makes noise are the inverters. It's about like an air conditioning unit, and that's hundreds of feet within the project. It would not be on.
What was it, which pan tricked the buffer, right?
Yes.
What are you going to do below and get it past? Kill it?
Wait, what, what? What came in the pice? Well, are the special exemption permits would require us to meet the buffer? It's always easier to, like, use what you have there, but if something happened to that, we would have to replace it.
Right. And you have to cut the trees down because bugs got it. How long would it take you? Somebody else think about it.
Second question. Have you done any health studies on the RF power grid when it's exposed? Your, your inverters take the DC power from the, the solar panels. They convert it into AC power. They do that. It also radiates an RFR, radio frequency radiation. Okay? You done any health studies on that? You're going to have, you're going to have one every thirty feet. And I forget how many thousands of acres you're going to have there. That's a lot of radiation.
There's one for every, every thirty acres of the...
I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm just asking if you guys done studies. It doesn't look like you've done the studies.
Well, the voltage of, you know, the, the voltage...
The man on the voltage, it's only, it's going from DC to AC.
Right.
And that's what converts it to the RFR frequency, which emits radiation. So I think we need to have a study done on that, and the environmental effects, what's going on in this acreage before anything happens.
I'm sure you'll make a note of that.
I said you, all of that's forest land. Y'all going to route what you need to get out of there. Are you going to put your panels up in a field of stumps? You're going to buy a gray deck, grow the stumps in, clear it, reseed it and all that?
Yeah, there's some sort of removals, and then we would reseed that land. Like, we have to have a, you know, grass.
The only reason I'm asking, you were talking about it's going to be minimal construction, minimal open land, or clear, you know, open ground at any particular time. But it looks something like you're going to have to clear probably seven or eight hundred acres, or at least five or six hundred acres just to grow the stumps.
Yeah, the stump would have to come out.
That's a lot of open, open ground.
I have a question.
Can you stand? I'll go ahead. Can you state your name? If you haven't spoke before, we don't know who you are.
Samantha Santelli.
Address? Okay.
After you clear all the land, say all the panels are up, and they're there, how do you, how are you going to clear, like mow the grass, weed, and maintain this land? So are we going to have lawnmowers going and weeders going at seven, eight o'clock in the morning all summer long? I mean, how do you plan on taking care of that?
No, I mean, you do have to control the grass. Like, the panels at the lowest point would be about, you know, two feet off the ground. Since it doesn't have to be like a golf course, what you try to do is plant it with something that grows slowly. And it could grow, you know, you could let it grow over a foot. So maybe you're mowing it once a year, maybe some years. You don't have to mow it. We've actually had projects where we've grazed sheep, which works pretty well. Goats, goats will, like, get into the wires and chew them, but sheep, sheep work pretty well. So that's something we would consider. We will have to make sure panels aren't being shaded, but it's not something that...
If you put sheep in there, are you, are you aware of the zoonotic diseases that sheep carry and could potentially, you know, harm other farm animals in that area?
I'm not aware, but something we look at.
What are your, what would you say to the lady who said that these panels will come right up to their outdoor living space? How would you address that?
Well, I'd be happy to look at where, where her backyard is. I think in that area, we'd be keeping, you know, a full buffer of existing trees. That's what we tried to do. And if, happy to meet with, be with neighbors and discuss. And we've done that with a few neighbors.
Did you give that to Teresa? Or I would ask, would you get that, please?
I will.
You guys will look and make a profit off this. Of course, you're in business to do that. So where is the county profit? This, this home picture?
So the, there's a few different ways. You know, this is a major investment in the county, and it's a big construction project. We always use local firms for a lot of that work. You know, maybe not like the electrical piece, but the site work, preparing fencing, seeding, that kind of thing. A lot of that is with local firms. And like I said, it's a big investment, but it doesn't create any new requirement in services. So, you know, most investments are using the road, sending kids to schools, using water and sewer. With this, it's almost, to the county, it's almost like we're just growing pine trees for another thirty years. But the property taxes would be fifteen or twenty times, you know, what a pine plantation would be. And that's, just because of the personal property, the way it's taxed.
So you, so what is the depreciation rate or the摊税 rate on your equipment?
So it's, the state set a schedule for solar equipment. It's very slow. So it's like, it uses a forty-year life. So it's not like, you know, some machinery and tools are only five years. But we go forty years, and it actually goes up after the fifth year. So I can chill with that schedule would be, but it would be, you know, millions of dollars over the life of it without, you know, requiring new county services.
It's not going to depreciate to a value of zero in like eight or ten years?
No, it would, it only goes down to, I mean, after forty years, it goes down to ten percent. But it, this thing's pretty high for, you know, twenty-five or thirty years.
Yes.
Question. You said it's forty-year life. Is it true that your, your panels depreciated by point zero five a year?
About point five.
Point five. And then by the time they're twenty-five or thirty years old, they're done.
Well, if it's point five a year, then it's, it's about an eighty percent.
Yeah, so they're useless. You don't even ever get a hundred percent of the sun. You only get twenty-three percent at best. If they're rotating, and they're not going to be rotating, there'll be six. Am I correct?
No, these will be rotating.
They will be rotating. Okay, so you'll get a better, get a better charge out of it. So what, what is your plan to, number one, keep this thing up to a viable farm? And number two, getting rid of the solar panels. Where are they going?
So the first question, I mean, I would say if the project is at eighty percent, and you pay for it as solar energy, that's pretty good. That's not worthless. And, you know...
Eighty percent, but it's not a hundred percent. It's eighty percent of the twenty-three.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's eighty percent of...
What's eighty percent of the twenty-three?
But I guess the other question is, what do you do with them? First of all, we're required to put up a decommissioning bond. So we have to do an estimate of the cost of decommissioning. We have to get that approved by the county, and we have to put up financial security for that. And that's before the project is constructed. Recycling, when you look at a panel, most of the weight is plastic, aluminum. That's eighty-five or ninety percent. That's obviously recyclable. The silica crystals can also be recycled. They're being recycled in many different parts of the US. Basically, they would be crushed and then reused, and, you know, in some kind of electrical equipment. So here are another question. But the answer is, you know, it can all be recycled and I expect to live it.
Do you have any stats on the amount of recyclable solar panels right now? Because my information is that very few solar panels are actually being recycled. We've only started since like about two thousand. So there's not, not a whole lot of information concerning the recycling of solar panels. There isn't even any regulations yet.
Yeah.
Any guidelines as to what you're going to keep, making your own regulations so to protect the citizens?
They are being recycled. And again, I mean, the, you have to put up financial security to guarantee that it will be decommissioned.
But my concern is the water that's around her, is even the lake. Okay? When these things break, and how they're going to be collected, and how are they going to be disposed of? Because we don't want that into our waters, because then it would not only affect that particular area, but the entire county, and the wildlife, and the children, and the birds, and everything else. So do we have any stats on that? Do we have any kind of guarantees, warranties, anything at all that's going to say, okay, Amelia, this is what we're going to do. The thing is, it's passed its life. We're going to take care of it, and this is how we're going to do it.
Yes, we are required to, to guarantee that the land gets back to its original, original condition.
You know, the solar panels.
And that includes solar.
But you're not going to give specifics, and how are you going to do that?
But we can talk about this after the meeting. I mean, I don't know exactly what the recycling process will be in forty years.
Can you get that back to us on what that, what you presently are going to do?
Sure.
Do you have other farms?
We do, yeah.
What do you do there?
We operate.
What do you do to recycle or dispose of the solar?
I mean, you would remove, it's fairly simple. You remove the, remove the aluminum, you remove the glass, and then you recycle the, the solar.
And, and do what with it? Where do you store it? Where do you, where do you ship it?
And then replace the recycling.
Okay, see, it's just my impression that you guys have not prepared to come into Amelia and give us the security that we need. Studies haven't been done. You're not sure how you dispose of them. You're not sure what the effects of certain chemicals are in the, in the runoff. So a lot of things you're just not sure of. And that you want to come in here and disrupt the lives of a lot of people. That's just my feeling. But I think we need more facts of the environment, as to environmental, aesthetically, and why. That's just my feeling, but I think we need more facts of the things from you as to environmental, aesthetically, and why, as to how to see what offering. Maybe I think if you hit those three stones, and give us some facts, not just we're required to do this, but give us some facts as to what those specifics are going to be. We need specifics, we need facts, we can't base, we can't make a, make a decision on, well, he said, or they did this over there. That doesn't help us, we need facts, exactly what specifics are you going to do on that farm? How are you gonna dispose of them? What is the downside, how many of these things are you gonna recycle or keep up at the, at the proper time? I mean, what are you gonna do with all the goat, I mean, things like that, you got neighbors there, I lived a person that had somebody with a goat, and it wasn't, wasn't too pleasant.
Can you give, can you give someone else a chance to speak first? Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Joan, I start with one great tip, so five chest landing drive Chesterville, Virginia, two three eight, three eight. It's been most of my time here to Amelia though, and I, I love, I love the county. I've been on solar issues since, since, uh, twenty fifteen. We do, we have two solar farms and power tank. Um, I feel like I've probably had personal experience with solar firsthand, I've studied it a lot, I study it every day just for that, and I study the research, so I, I'm concerned about it. I have young children, I'm sixteen, and I have a nineteen year old, and I have a twenty-seven year old. Um, but I think I would encourage any of you to have been to a solar farm, visit the, visit the farms and power tanks, open, you can drive through. It's hard to see it from the highway, it's very baffert, you know, um, Dominion Power, um, two or twelve years ago, I heard Thomas Farrell was CEO of Dominion Power, who died last year. He spoke at a very large business launch, and he said, you know, we're gonna be dependent on fossil fuels the next thirty years predominantly. It seems like things are changing nationwide, also in, also, also in Virginia. And I do think that, um, it comes behind this, this has been pushed, I get a letter about this or a phone call, not every day, but certainly every week. People want to buy your land, they want to buy your lease, they wanna talk about this. Um, this is gonna happen somewhere, and I don't, I personally do not see it, no, I'm not living next to this, but I wouldn't have, probably living next to a solar farm. There's gonna be one close to where I live now coming, coming, and, um, I'm not, I'm not concerned worried about it. I guess I trust the system, I don't trust our government, but I trust that, I trust, I do trust science. Um, Torch, I did, um, a lot of stu-, a lot, a lot, a lot of research on Torch. People, people call me, I find out who their customers are, who they're, who they're, how it, how it's being funded, who's gonna build it, who's gonna buy the power. Um, it's, it's, um, you know, the sun is a powerful thing, it's probably gonna be there for a long time. If we were to lose the sun, we would all die quickly, we're not, in a, in a, in a matter of months. But, you know, the sun is gonna be, for solar, our energy source is actually a free source. Solar in a few years is gonna be very efficient, I believe. We do the research on this, uh, we have battery storage on the farms and power tank, they've been there for over a year. You know, the, the best days they make solar are not on hot days, the best days are on a spring day or a fall day, a winter day. There's a lot about the science of this that, you know, I don't know either, but I have done, I'm gonna research on this. Um, and so, it's an amazing thing that we can get that much, in a few years, it's gonna be, some places now they're able to get the, the footprint down to four point five acres and seven acres per, per bedawatt. Initially, it was about ten, ten acres per bedawatt, it's gonna, quickly going to be produced. It's gonna be a very efficient process, no man hours required, in a few years, it's gonna save us money arbitrarily, as far as all of our power bills. I do think that we will probably need and, and, and use fossil fuels probably for a mile lifetime, probably, probably later for several lifetimes. I think solar is gonna come, I think it's gonna come, and I think it's gonna be a positive thing over the next fifteen, fifteen to twenty years, I think it's gonna be effective, efficient. I think we're gonna be able to harness our, our, our free, our free energy source, I think it's gonna work. Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Someone else coming in the back?
It's gonna heat, do these panels put off?
Uh, so the panels don't put off, I mean, the panels don't put off any heat, you know, on a sunny day, they'll, they're gonna hold it hotter off. You know, not like it would burn your hand. Um, i- i- it's not gonna affect the temperature when you're standing like right outside a, a project, like outside the fence. It may be a slight increase like between rows of panels, but that would only be during the daytime if you're in the middle of the project.
What kind of reflection do you put off?
It's pretty low glare, it's, it's way less glare than water.
For panels?
Yeah, like the surface of the panel is designed to take in the sun, not reflect it, it would be less effective if it were, you know, reflecting all of that light. Uh, so it's a lot less than a, than water, a window, um, there's some amount of glare, but it's less than most, um, you know, most other handmade objects.
Ford Music, and, uh, I'm representing one eight seven eight one, Four House Road. Um, that was actually my mother that spoke earlier, and this is her grandson. And my, my concern with this, uh, farm is the impact to the environment, the long-term impact to the environment, wildlife. Um, this gentleman here stated that they are required to put the land back the way that it was. When the forty, I guess it's forty years of this, that this development is in use, and it's no longer useful. But the material is pulled out, and I would just, uh, consider everybody to think about the fact that, right now, the land directly behind the house is in mixed growth. Trees that are probably everybody forty to fifty years old, um, hardwoods and pines, uh, and you can't just put that back. When this solar farm comes out, this young man will be fifty years old, when the land is back in the state that it is now, he will be dead. That's the, that's the long-term effect of this, that's how long we're looking on here with the, the implementation of this, uh, development. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
My name is Beth Stanley, my husband Jim, we live at sixty-six eleven Danstel Road. A lot of people know where we live, we live in the greenhouse with the big gas signs. We're diagonally across from Ronnie Memorial, and we're gonna be looking right at it. We are Chesterfield County natives our whole life, and we chose Amelia County to move to, to live the rest of our life. And we have put our life savings into our home and property, and I really personally do not want to look at solar farm. I don't understand solar farm, to be perfectly honest. I commend you, young man, for answering the questions, I don't think any of us know enough about a solar farm to put it in Amelia County. Um, and again, I think my property value is gonna go down. Um, and I really sympathize with the people on poorhouse, um, because all of this is gonna back right up to their property. I certainly don't wanna look at it. Um, there is other land in Amelia County, I'm sure that could be utilized better than where they have selected. And I'm thinking the only people that really want it are the people that are gonna make money off of it. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else like to speak before I close the public hearing? I don't like to close it without everybody having a chance, because once I close it, no one else speaks, other than the commission members. Other than questions, who might ask the solar company. Anyone else have comments or concern? Now, you have to remember, what we, whatever we decide, not the final, the board of supervisors has the final say. All our responsibility is to try to gather as much information as we can, to get more heads and more minds to think about the project. And then we pass it on to the five board supervisors. So don't get too angry at us, because we do not have the final say, we just try to pull out as much information. There'll also be another public hearing with the board of supervisors before they make their decision. We can table it up to sixty days, re-review it, but after sixty days, we have to come up with a solution or a recommendation for, against, or any other in between, and it's up to the board supervisor. Anyone else like to have something to say?
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Holly sent, Holly Steele signed a letter that she sent me, I live in Palmville, Virginia.
Uh huh.
And I'd just like to know for the board of supervisors, if she could, she's gonna send me another letter.
You'll get another letter, anybody that touches the project will get another letter.
Thank you very much.
If you got a letter this time, you'll get a letter next time.
I got more than time before, and I get one every year.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna say, I think it was very obvious from the questions that this man up front asked tonight, and he mentioned that Torch Energy was not able to get, there's a lot of um, environmental impact and a lot of overall studies as far as the environment and and the recycling in the future, and what's gonna happen, there's a lot of questions that can't be answered. And this is a massive project to bring in, and when somebody can't, doesn't have a lot more firm answers, like what's gonna happen, or what, what needs to happen for the future, every standard that they wanna do this, but they can't say what's gonna happen, I think that's, a lot of questions that can't be answered, have not been answered.
I'm sure he didn't come prepared to answer all the questions, but I'm sure he, his firm will. They're taking question, they're answering questions, and hopefully they can get answers back to either us or the board of supervisors. So I'm sure they're gonna ask, want the same answers that you would want, okay? Anyone else like to speak before I close the public hearing? No one wants to speak, public hearing is closed. You're welcome to leave, you're welcome to stay, just keep your noise down so each of us can hear each other, okay? Appreciate you coming, I'd like to see the interest. The last two board supervisor meeting, I think I've been on here ten or fifteen years, and most people I've ever seen a planning commission meeting. So appreciate you coming out, and the board supervisors appreciate your comments too. Have a good evening, Happy New Year.
What is worth, no way of contacting me, couldn't make it here type, anyone, he was adamantly above.
Who?
No, Wyatt.
Wyatt?
Yeah, he's, he, I was gonna make, make it up, but he was supposed, yes, we let you off.
Mark, this is a little quiet, I got. Okay. I'll give you five minutes, and you wrap the hush up.
You're a real good president. From that, well, real good president too. You did a good job.
Well, I got you in the morning too.
Honestly, you did a good job.
This could be on auto.
I put it on auto until.
Don't know, it could be.
What did you say?
Thank you, man.
I don't, I don't.
All right, John, discuss, can you step outside, please? Thank you. All right, get back to the planning commission, I mean, a lot of them, and y'all have any questions for the solar people? I have a few myself, but.
Um, I do.
Y'all can move on up.
Um.
Don't feel like you're out in the west coast.
How long have, what is the oldest solar farm that? So, when you took off, you think, you know, replace everything, what, replace the land as it was, how many of those have you done?
Yeah, we have, uh, my company built our first solar project in two thousand nine.
Okay.
We have, we have a decommissioned a large, a large project.
So.
How old are you, three? You have three out now, right? You have three solar farms in Virginia now, right?
Uh, permitted, we have.
Uh.
We have three locally permitted.
Yeah.
Projects in Virginia.
So actually, you all have a decommissioned any?
Yeah, we have none, which is, which is.
They haven't been out on.
That's what I'm saying, they haven't.
About the industry in this, um, right now.
You really have experience decommissioning a solar.
We have not, right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Nobody asked that.
We don't, we don't give a very good idea of what it costs to build, and in reverse, it's a very similar process, we pull it out, steel posts, uh, you know, with the, how many trucks to bring in the equipment. Uh, so we have, we have not decommissioned a large scale project, but we, uh, know exactly what the components are. A lot of the scrap, like a lot of that stuff, it's steel and aluminum, which holds its value, and it's, um, there haven't been a lot, you know, big projects decommissioned, but the, with the, both the material and the process is, is pretty well.
So you don't think recycling is going to be a problem?
I don't know.
Anybody else have questions?
So I, I gotta.
I don't wanna go down my list.
Uh, so I've got a question, it's more from my understanding, because I, y'all may be in a better shape to understand it than I do. But in trying to research this, um, so the Virginia legislature passed, I forget, it was a house bill or something, both, both houses approved it, but by, what is it, twenty, twenty, twenty forty-five or twenty fifty, we have to be a hundred percent renewable energy, is that correct there?
It's almost fifty percent.
I think it's fifty.
It's a fifty.
I don't think it's a hundred.
Uh, well, it's maybe it's a phase.
It's a phase in, but I don't think it's a hundred.
I think it was, I, I, anyway, and I, I don't know what, I thought I read a hundred, but it doesn't matter. It's a significant portion that has to be done in Virginia. How, how much, and that's total renewable energy, that's hydroelectric, windmill, whatever else, but how many solar developments are we gonna need across the state to fill that need by that time? Any idea? I mean, you're just, are you just beginning, or is this something that's gonna explode across the countryside, across?
It, it would, it would take a lot of, it would, it would take a lot of solar, I think, like you said, it's not, we're not trying to get to fifty percent with just solar. It would be very significant, I don't have the, I don't have like the exact acreage. Um, I, I would say that, you know, my company comes from the oil and gas world, and we got into renewables and now solar, because it's, you can produce electricity at the wholesale rate or below it, and you can guarantee that, you know, that that's gonna be your power price for years, which you can't do if you're a natural gas plant, and we're, we're doing projects in West Virginia, you know, so it doesn't have that same goal, it's doing the same thing. Um, we, our model is to own these projects and sell the power on the wholesale market. Um, so it's not, the economics are very good, we're not, you know, this isn't purely driven by a state goal.
Well, do you think large solar farm like this, the way things changing, like cell phones, you know, you used to have a calculator about as big as this table, and it wouldn't do anything. Now you, same thing on handheld. You think in the future, though, the panels will get so good, it's gonna be put on houses and stuff like that, and you're not gonna need the large acreages for solar? Or is that large acreage is gonna be used more for industry?
Yeah, I think you're gonna need the large projects, um, the panels keep getting better, but it's, they're getting better gradually, like it's not like the.
Not like the cell.
Not as fun in nineteen ninety-five, you know, it's, they're improving, we've had solar technology for a long time. Um, you know, there's a lot of people that do rooftop solar, and there's value, but in terms of the efficiency and, and, and the cost of building a big project, you know, we're producing power at one fourth, yeah, a quarter of the cost that you would with a rooftop rig, because that, you know, so much of it is figuring out how to put it on the roof. I, I think you're, you're still gonna have these big projects, even if the panels do, you know, keep getting better.
So you put your first panel in two thousand and nine, have you had any issues? I mean, is there a maintenance, regular maintenance, or is there a, something needs to be done quickly, like in the middle of the night on a repair job, or? And what states are they in, where, where are they at?
Yeah, um, some projects in Arizona, New Mexico, Colorado, Connecticut. I, I worked on projects in New York with a different company before I joined, I joined Torch. They're, they're pretty low maintenance, like there's not a lot of moving parts, um, you, you do have, you might have problems with panels. Um, kinda individual panels that you can, you know, replace if we need to. Um, kind of individual panels that you can, you know, replace if we need to. The converters are usually replaced at year, about year fifteen or twenty, so kind of halfway through the panel life. You can monitor it, uh, pretty well, so you can kind of see if there's a problem with, with the wiring. You know, th- there are maintenance, you know, maintenance things, just like anything else, but it's, it's pretty reliable.
How large are the, some of these other, uh, facilities?
Yes, it'd be, um,
I think you stated it was hanging three in here. I, I was just wondering how large they were.
So, so the other Virginia projects are about the same size. We have one in, in Greensville. That we've put in, which is a little bit smaller. One of it Frederick County, which is larger. Uh, we've built projects in, in a few states that are about the size of this one.
Is this normally the size you go for? Cause there are two on each side of me and are a little smaller than this, a little smaller than this, as far as acreage.
Yeah, I mean, there's kind of two, there's kind of two types of projects in Virginia from, from ground mounted solar. You kind of got the large scale, um, which is what we focus on. And then you have the thirty acre or forty acre projects that are
They're battery packed.
Uh, they might have batteries. It might be, there might be like a state subsidy for, for those smaller projects. With those, they, they might be selling power to the cooperative. I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
But do your other projects have the substation like you supposedly putting in this one?
Yes.
And I assume you picked this location because the power lines that just went through there a few years ago.
Yeah, because of the, um, that, you know, we have to do a long study with utilities. They kind of make sure and do three studies to make sure we're not overloading anything on the grid. And it's not just that power line, but they look at, you know, where, where is the power going? Like sometimes they find a problem with the substation ten miles away. So a big part of it is we kind of, we start with looking at where, you know, what transmission line could we connect to? And then where is their favorable land? On this project, we've done two of the three studies with Dominion, we're in the third one. Um, and it looks, it looks favorable and we, the end of it, we'll get the, um, the interconnection agreement from them. Uh, which lets us, you know, connect to the grid.
If it's seventeen hundred acres and you state that you only go have seven to seven fifty, eight acres of solar panels. Is that extra thousand acres? Is it buffers or is it, will be room for future expansion or is that?
I think the seventeen hundred acre number is essentially the total acreage of all the tax parcels involved in the project. So it doesn't necessarily reflect the project's impacts. Um, that's just the total acreage of all of the parcels that will have some, some degree involved in the project. The seven fifty that we, acres that we mentioned tonight is, is the fenced in areas that we would have actually under panels. There's a big delta there because we haven't, uh, fully engineered the site. And so we know that we're gonna have to break up the arrays in a way that is ideal for the site. We're avoiding wetlands, we're avoiding And we, we would just have to, you know, a hundred percent design until we get to that point.
Does it, does the lease agreements incorporate the seventeen hundred acres? Or will the final lease just be for the part that's actually got solar panel and buffer?
It would, um, it would probably be the land that we're using.
So that would be your buffers plus the fenced in area?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Somebody, with some land enters, we, we agree to like a minimum, so they know we can't, you know, lease two acres. But, um, the, the preliminary plan that was in the application does not show panels on seventeen hundred acres. It's, I think it's, so it, it's around nine, which is like a max potential extent. Diagram that doesn't, I can't take into a final engineering, but it's basically saying this is the most we could possibly impact.
I guess you go on the property, photography of the land too. It probably has to whether you put up. And Roy brought out too, how far from a living? And you start working ground bulldozer, that many acres, it's gonna take you a while to get grass to grow on.
When you do, uh, you, you will have some sections where you have to do some grading or leveling. Is that correct?
Uh, there will be some, yeah, we try to, the perfect sign is, uh, you don't have to grade anything.
A perfect sign, it, it would be, be level. Well, Arizona has a lot of advantages and so, I would think that a lot more uh, sunny days as compared to East Coast. Uh, so it's, uh, it, it's a better place for solar than it is here. But with regard to the way that that is done, the, the chief way is to take the high ground and push it in to fill in the low ground. And that's, uh, what is also done. What is best is to remove the topsoil. And then fill with the subsol and then put the topsoil back on. That gives you, that gives you the topsoil for the, that you need to maintain the vegetation. But it also is the only way that you can have, have a then, uh, be able to go back. As you were talking about, if the soil scientists will tell you that it takes a hundred years to make one inch of topsoil. And, uh, so topsoil is a valuable, uh, asset. Now, in this county, the, the land itself is, the, the qualities of land. There are three magisterial districts in this county. And this project is located in Giles, which is the central one. And it goes all the way across from Palatine to Nodaway. It contains the best quality land in the county. And the Jackson District to the south east has some, uh, some good land, but, but still is not the quality of the land in Giles. The, uh, these other two projects ended up being in Giles District. Uh, in Lee District, which is the upper end of the county, there are, uh, uh, soils that won't perp. As, uh, Roy here and the planning commission many times. And, uh, and the, the pine trees, uh, that you grow about half or two thirds as tall as in some other parts of the camp. Because the quality of the soil. So when the gentleman made the point about using agricultural land, the, the reason that, that people settled in here in colonial days and so forth was because, is what really now Giles Magisterial District is because that's where the best land was. And the, uh, plantations and so forth over close to where Chairman is so forth, uh, you know, that they were relatively good, not like land out in the Midwest where you have uh, really deep topsoil of, of, you know, feet. But, uh, so it is important to preserve our, our good soils. There's only three percent of the earth's surface that's arable land. Some of your, uh, young, uh, projects out in Arizona is probably in land that is, is not very productive land, doesn't even have the potential to be productive land. So it, it says that a hundred and sixteen acres was agricultural land as far as panels were concerned. But my question is, what is the total acres of the seventeen hundred agricultural land fact?
Sorry, are you including like pine trees?
Yeah. Pine trees, pines are crop. It just takes longer to make any dollars on them. About every twenty years, but.
Well, well, I, I wasn't doing that, but I think that's, that's a different problem. That, 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 that is, he, he is right.
Tree farmers, that's a crop.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not a tree farmer.
I think he was asking how much land is actually croppable land.
Like I can tell you, I think it, we initially said one sixteen. I think the correct number would be thirty-one acres of current cropland.
Okay.
Now, if, you know, most of the rest of it is pine trees. And a lot of it has actually been, um, a fair amount is actually being timbered. Um, and I think they would, you know, grow pine trees again for the next thirty years. So it, you know, the majority is not, is not cropland, um, currently. Um, a lot of it is, um, you know, land with pines where, where, you know, they're, they're ready to be cut.
Well, I, I know these, some of these early ones, you know, have, have used cropland. And there's a lot of kickback going on about that now. It was locally and, and I wanted to just, in, in Palatine, they made a, a, um, a, a big, uh, uh, point that theirs was all cut over timberland and didn't include cropland.
Or rowed cropland.
Yeah. Uh, because there is some question and to be able to have it, you, you say be, be vested. You know, go back the way it is. Uh, there's certainly some question about that, depending on uh, how it's handled, what is done, there's certainly room, uh, to proper, to something, you know, that the topsoil would be safe. Also, when you make roads, the way people make roads, they take the top land off. And it's, you know, the topsoil is removed. And so then whatever, you know, that area would be, uh, subs- subsequent on growth of, of crops very well, takes years and years. Uh, now, on it's, it's, some of this is RP five. But some of it was, uh, rural residential three. Now, the rural residential three is our, other than, than, uh, the intensive, you know, village development areas and so forth. It's the, it's, it's the smallest, uh, the, the, the closest density. Then we, we have the fives and then further out the tens and so forth. Well, uh, of course, the reason that the power line, the main, uh, uh, energy power line is, is in this area is because it, it's center of where the people are. Ideally, in terms of the soil, this project would be passed up in the upper end of the county in, in Lee Magisterial District. But that's not where you have your, 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 uh, high voltage line and so forth. However, the, the point is made in here a couple of times, that, that this is kind of being a remote area. Well, this is two and a half miles from the courthouse and some of it is in the three. Uh, uh, I don't, about half of the parcels. Well, three means, uh, uh, that, uh, the closer, uh, densities are allowed. Uh, and lot closer than ten and, uh, which is further out. And the reason is that the, the expected, uh, growth uh, would be closer to the, at the center, the heart of the county. So it's closer for, for kids to be lost to the school system, etc., but other services. I don't think that we're gonna want to see another size, uh, solar farm this size in a residential three. Eric, in fact, it, it wasn't even allowed until we changed it. We changed it because it came up and it said somebody wanted uh, to maybe take the old landfill and twenty acres or something and put in a smaller solar farm. That's the only reason that we even changed it, to allow it to go into groups. So this is, there's some is in fowl, some is in trees, this is more like. Uh, you, you have heard uh, some of the concerns that people are, are close to this. And, uh, I'd like to see the planning commission, uh, uh, not act on this tonight, but give a chance for this to settle in and see if some modifications can't be made that would make this project more desirable. I'm not, I, I'm not, never have been against solar. And solar, we all not even need to answer the question over here. Solar isn't gonna be enough. It's gonna take, uh, some, some other new science that's happened and fuels. Uh, we already have twenty percent that's nuclear. And there may be a new type of nuclear. Uh, there is, it's, it's coming, that will be, uh, more environmentally friendly. Uh, and so, uh, there, there will be other energy sources. Uh, and of course, there's, there's wind and, uh, and so forth too. So I hope that what you all have taken in and taken some notes about people's concerns. And there can be some qualifications that, that you might be able to, uh, discuss here that would have some kind of type of compromise on some of these issues. You know, it's not that, that, uh, uh, you know, a totally a matter of yes or no. It's a matter of working together and trying to make, make it, uh, more satisfactory.
Any more questions before I ask my next?
You might want to do a little more checking into what this gentleman here was talking about. Like the radiation part, I know there's some concerns and people who live around here. You try to harden ultraviolet radiation, it's ionizing radiation, fairly dangerous stuff. And I think some people are gonna be looking for some answers for that type of, you're bringing, drawing in to your panels. It's gonna give some sort of a, something's gonna be given off from that. I think he had some valid point.
Other thing I was wondering, the county gonna be responsible for kind of modern modern things, defenses and anything about the solar farm? Once it's constructed, I know we'll have to probably go out there and check on all the permits till it's finished. But after that point, is the county gonna have to have a person that kind of like we have at the landfill to make sure everything is up to par?
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't think the county must have spent a lot of effort on that. Um, you know, the satellite, you know, has a lot of people coming in and out every day. With solar, you don't really have that. It's a couple of times a month, you know, routine maintenance. On the fencing, you know, it would be a requirement, a special exception permit. It's also a requirement of national electric code. So if there's a problem with the fence, we would fix that pretty quickly. We wouldn't want, it would be hard to like get in and steal something, but we wouldn't want, you know, something impacting the project.
And of course, you haven't done all the file engineering, but with each track or each with different parcels have different fences around it, not continuous fence around the whole thing. Cause I mean, you look at the photograph, it's got a pile of fence, but I mean, would you have around this area, you might have a wet spot or wet spot in there, a creek bottom that you're not gonna be in the solar farms. That would be outside, outside the fence and you start a fence on the other side for the next side.
That's correct.
I wondered for this, the wildlife and all, you know, concerns came up. And my concern too, if you farm and you start fencing out five hundred acres, the deer on the outside gonna eat everything possible outside because nothing inside, they can't get in there and eat. And what if you had separate things that could get through there somehow, get a little something?
Yeah, we usually don't fence over wetlands. Like if there's any kind of major stream, we're not gonna, we completely avoid that with, you know, the fencing and the panels. So you would have multiple fenced scenarios. Like on this one, you kind of got a major swamp.
In the middle?
Yeah, we're kind of on the west side of that for most of it. But it would generally we're avoiding the wetlands with everything. So we're not fencing over it. And that's kind of a natural wildlife corridor.
The other thing, may never happen again, tornado go through the courthouse here not too long, well, probably fifteen. In Kentucky and all, I had some friends out there that had that go through. What's that do?
They do pretty well. I don't care what you get. You put the steel post in the ground and you kind of, you have that depth that can withstand really hot wind loads. So a lot of times if there's a tornado, the solar farm is one of the things that's not damaged. But we have insurance.
And the other thing I'll ask is, I have a, a few buildings, I just built an acre under roof and I know how much water comes off of that. Where does all that water come off those panels? You take five hundred acres of panels, at least half of that is like a tin roof. So I mean, does that water come off hard enough? I mean, I hope you have established, cause I'm soil water too. Establish grass before you to put too many panels up that can control any water if you do have a major storm. And I've seen poor engineer or whoever, how many, seven ponds you'll have to have.
So we do, we do get the grass growing. If you're looking at a row of panels and they're kind of running north, south, the panel's about six feet long. And they tilt throughout the day, right? They follow the sun. So in the east, they, they go sixty degrees east and then at the end of the day, they're sixty degrees the other way. You also can't build them close together because they'll shade each other. So if you have a six foot panel, you usually have eighteen or twenty feet for the next row. So if you're, if you're kind of bird's eye view looking down, you're only covering like thirty-five percent.
Of the ground.
You know, it's not like a blanket. So you kind of have to do that to avoid shading, but that's also why you do have grass growing. You don't have, you know, water coming off in the same spot, you know, because they are shifting. And the grass actually grows, it grows really well under there. There is, you know, the access roads are not impervious. You know, you have a few concrete pads where you put equipment. And there are erosion sediment ponds that we'll put in when we build it. It's part of every project, but you're not really changing the, you're not making a big parking lot. Most of it, you know, you still got vegetation growing on the ground on all installment.
Anyone else have any question?
So I'm just trying to make sure that I got everything straight on the land. So you've got seventeen hundred and some acres all total.
Parceling.
Right. And seven hundred and fifty of it's gonna be fenced in roughly. So you've got another thousand acres scattered throughout there. If the landowners continue to use what's not fenced, or is the whole seventeen hundred acres under your control? How, how does that work? I mean, if you need to cut timber, do you go in there and cut the timber? If it's got open farmland, do the farmers still farm it? How does, how does that work?
Yeah, the landowners will keep doing whatever they want. I mean, some of that land, the seventeen hundred, some of it was that the landowner wasn't gonna lease it to us, right? They wanted to keep most of their big ag fields. Yeah, generally if we're not leasing it, they can do whatever they want.
So if it's not, if it's not inside the fence, then just continue as well?
Correct. It's possible. So when we get our stormwater approved by the state, sometimes we lease land that is open space conservation. And you kind of get credit for, hey, this is always gonna be pine trees.
Right, yeah.
But if we're not, if we're not using that land, it can do the same thing.
And another question, not really related to that, but one of the benefits listed in there was benefits to the local economy from people working on it and doing that type of thing. In your experience with the other projects that you've done, do the local construction guys end up working or is it contractors brought in from out of state somewhere that specialize in this type of thing?
Yeah, we always, we always get some local firms that's usually doing the work to prepare the site, like the access roads, the seeding, if there's, you know, instructing the, you know, if there's ponds for erosion and sediment control. I can't, you know, promise exactly how local that is, but it's, you know, it's usually economically better for us to use the a local company to do a lot of that.
I, I just didn't know. If that's, that's a lot of fence to build. Somebody here could build, you know, that you could make some significant money. Or, you know, maybe y'all have somebody that typically does that comes from somewhere else. I just didn't know.
I just know the solar farm is close to me. One of them is out of Louisiana. It's done, it did the grading and that one's out of South Carolina. Cause they couldn't find anybody locally that could get to it when they wanted it done. And that Louisiana came in out of Texas to do a forty acre one. But I think part of it's the timing. We don't have anyone in the county right now that even runs a dozer much, not like we used to. So, and it's gonna take a while to clear seven hundred and fifty acres. A lot of stumps.
Okay. One, one of the things you said is that you wanted grass. It wouldn't grow much. Well, the, I mean, really, I mean, the reason we're not wanting fossil fuels is because of the because of the carbon. And photosynthesis is what takes the sun's energy and and the trees grow and the grass and the, and the crops. In fact, I've read that a corn for you will actually, even though it's just during the growing season, will absorb more sun's radiation than, than the solar pounds for the year. Of course, that's got to do with, you know, the corn, you know, the way the plant is designed. And so the, the grass itself, there's photosynthesis that takes place there. So if you're, you know, you want something that won't grow, but when it's growing, it's creating oxygen. So, you know, you, you might want to think about that a little bit. You're, you're going, you're being counterproductive.
I'd like to talk a little bit for a second.
Sure do.
I had, I ain't got nothing to say to you. You might want to stay here and said everyone will just talk about it. I had a lot of people over the last month call me up, a dramatic amount in the last two or three days. I went over to solar farm near your place and picked up an excavator. Well, some people here at the bridge, they rented from the same company. Just asked me to go pick it up. I voted for them. And when I went over there, I picked the floor and I seen y'all helping by grading and clearing stumps and grass and all of that stuff. I was floored. It was not what I expected. If I would have seen it before I voted on it, I wouldn't have voted on it. You can't have seventeen hundred and sixty acres. I don't care if you put ten acres of solar panels, a thousand acres in solar panels. It is within this community a major confusion of how many acres of solar pounds it's gonna be. I've heard anywhere from four hundred to seven hundred to a thousand to seventeen hundred acres. Nobody knows and it is a major fear amongst people living around this area that's on this map. And they got a hold of that map and they see I'm not smart enough and I got glasses to see all the little text maps to see if all these little things are here add up to a four hundred or seven hundred or eight hundred or nine hundred acres, but it needs to be clarified. But these people have worked their whole lives. They've got total one hundred percent investment. Lock, stock and barrel, nowhere else to go. And they got panels right outside. I have talked with people in Mecklenburg, Powhatan, Lebonburg, Cumberland. Their solar panels are so great. If we just kind of sit tight and let them put them everywhere else, it's making our land go up in value because nobody wants to live there. So I have been a supporter of Ralph, thank the world, all of them, Scott, Paul, all of them. But I cannot justify in my own heart how nobody else benefits from the stuff of landowners. Nobody. You can say the county does, but Powhatan raised taxes the other week and that, from what I heard, I don't have documentation of it. And they've got solar farms. We've got two now. Let's see how it goes. So let's try to take this right here and, and get a lot of confusion out of it. Because it is a lot of scared people in that area. It's a big loop right there. I've seen what eight hundred acres looks like. Seventeen hundred acres is huge. And you've got a mob, a mob of people coming to the board to sympathize with me. What you seen here tonight was just a drop off the mountain.
Just a part, part of it.
It is nothing. If that's gonna be your first meeting, you're gonna get broken good. And, and, and it's a, it's, they got a, they got a, they got a petition. And I just don't see how Richard can afford this with everybody else's livelihoods at stake. And they don't know exactly what's going on. So I'm gonna be the leg breaker. It's nine o'clock at night. Make a motion that we deny this. And you can go back and do whatever you want to do, or you can just take it on to the board the way it is. But I'm gonna make a motion for the people that have talked for me today and this past week and month. That we deny this as it is right here, right now. Vote on it, talk about it a little bit more, or we can shoot it on up to the board, but that's, that's where I'm gonna be in trial.
So you've made that into motion. It's our second. We have discussion till we second it.
That's accurate.
We're gonna second it. Now it's open for discussion.
All right. So before, before you go into discussion, I am gonna recuse myself from, from voting on this because I do have family members that are landowners. I guess maybe technically legally I can get away with a conflict of interest there. Small county, so I'm not gonna, I'll exclude myself from the vote. But I will give you my opinion. I'm very sympathetic to the landowners. I understand their concerns. I do think things could be tightened up a little bit on this. That being said, it's been made very clear in this county the last couple of months. People don't want subdivisions. They don't want apartments. They want rural character, whatever. And something's gotta be, we do have to make some progress somewhere. They've asked, I've, I've talked to a bunch of people about this. The people that are next to it obviously aren't happy with it. Majority of the people that don't live there, I can see the need for it. And the majority of the people are actually, I won't say, some of them were for it, some of them were, but the majority of them are, are not against it, right? But I, I think, yeah, I'm sympathetic with, with the landowners, but number one question I was asked, well, would you want it next to you? No, I wouldn't want it next to me, but I'd rather have that than a subdivision next to me. And I think some of the input from this, you know, from the landowners will benefit and allow, allow them to keep staying business. Kind of tough to inform them. But anyway, I'm not gonna vote, but that's my opinion.
Two, two things that concern me. Some of the people that draw to these landowners here that are gonna lease this property are very large landowners. Some of them own thousands of acres of land. They've given up four or five hundred here. It's not gonna bother them a bit. But the folks that live beside it there, it's got five, ten, maybe even thirty acres. And that's all they own.
And all they'll ever own.
Right. I think we kind of put the screws to them. And, and, and the other point was, not, not many of y'all were on the planning commission when we redid it, playing several years ago. I know one was, Howard was. We had a guy named Paul Grasswitz from Powhatan came over and helped us with the replanting thing. And we talked about then about what do we do if we think, even if we think it's a decent project, but everybody hates it. He said, you have to honor that if you have a major, major public outcry, you have to do that. He said, you just can't go ride, you know, roughshod over everybody else, over their opinions. And I think he made a good point.
I had two people call me that has been offered money for cements of property and they denied it. They were so, they just didn't want to do that to their neighbor on the other side of them. And I'm, I'm fine with solar. I just think this right here, this one spot, seventeen hundred acres. I know you gotta vote on what you got, but there's a place right across the road. It's already got a fence around it. It's dead lane, but I'm not gonna get into that. That's a big topic I'm hearing from everybody. But it's a lot of confusion here. They're thinking, if you look at the map here, like Rinnamore Church, you got stuff coming right to it. I'm on the planning mission. I'm sitting here now and I just figured out it was seven hundred and sixty-five acres versus seventeen hundred acres. There's a lot of people that are too scared to come up here to talk, but they're gonna come to the board. They've signed the petition and some of them are right on Facebook. They're just nervous about coming up here. They got their whole lock, stock and barrel in it. They have nowhere to run. They gotta look at just the rest of their life. They can move to a subdivision. But they can't, they have not yet nothing that comes. They can't say it. Can't do nothing, nothing with it. That's where my heart's at. Like I can't justify letting five, six landowners you know, come out better than the whole neighborhood. You gotta be attentive, you know? And I'm thinking maybe if we're supposed to get with the people all around here maybe talk to them a little bit and tell them, hey, you even have seventeen hundred acres of solar panels. You're gonna have seven hundred. That might cost her now. But that's up to y'all. I'm gonna tell you what I think about and what they're telling me that they think about is what's on the picture right now. And it's a lot of confusion, a lot of worry. You don't live there. They do.
So it's, it's a lot of people got up and spoke not in favor of it. A lot of people got up and spoke in favor of it, but the world's a good benefit financially because if you didn't invest in people, I'm upset. Oh, I think that's a great idea. I think it would hold a little more weight. But you had nobody on your side of the table, other people are gonna make money. I'm looking a little bit.
Yeah, I think if you was to give it to people that, I'm gonna say first off, Rinnamore. That's, yeah, that'll help me a lot. And then you start talking to the neighbors in the neighborhood, Tanners, Eastons, the Hastings and stuff like that. And just give them some clarification because they're confused. I had, I've seen the signs and I got what's in the book, seventeen hundred and sixty-five acres. That's what I thought you were gonna have.
That's what we all thought.
Seven hundred acres. To me, I don't see why you're paying another thousand acres or seven hundred. I scratched my head on that. That's y'all's business. But that might help the people around it. But right now, the motion has been made off of what people are seeing and worried about, nervous about. That's what I'm gonna stick back. It's nine o'clock at night. They're sitting humming all about it all night long, but that's the way I see it.
Seven hundred and sixty-three acres is what's on the lease. Is that?
That's, that's right.
That is, that is. That is, that is.
But I think a lot of people there were thinking seventeen hundred and fifty acres of panels, actual panels. That's a big difference. You go from seventeen hundred to seven, that might, you know, you're talking about having a forty foot or fifty foot buffer. That ain't really much enough, in my opinion. But if you've got an extra thousand, that might satisfy some people. It might not be seen as much. And you deal with Robbie Carson. That's another. You deal with Robbie Carson, I think it's just, that man has worked hard his whole life, and he don't need to be riding back, you know, I think. Right, I just.
Well, I stick by the second of the motion.
Yeah. I mean, a motion made in second, now we have discussion before we ever vote on it. But I want everybody to have their say before we vote, you know?
I'm not against it. I'm against, this is just a lot of confusion. And that's what we're voting on right now in my heart, is that confusion. I think it needs to, kind of like what Juan said. Juan on the table, I'm making a motion to kill this and get this thing right here nailed down, exactly. Talk to all your neighbors. That's gonna be a join us and work it out with them before you bring them back, so we don't have to hash it out here all this stuff. Because it's gonna be a big crowd at the board supervisors, man, if you don't. It's gonna be a big.
It'll be there no matter what decision we make.
You might be able to put a flame out or leave a pitchfork at home or something if they talk. But you gotta talk. I think you gotta work it out.
Well, it's only three hundred and fifty feet from Ritten Church. Not very far.
We turned this down. We weren't super outside of recommendation. They still get to vote on it. They still get to final say.
Any more discussion?
Well, I guess, I think, go ahead. As a board supervisor representative, I agree with Richard that we need more, we would need more information to answer some of these questions, to ease the tension at our meeting too.
I think the question right now is, with the motion, as you speak of the motion that's on the floor, is you know, if we defer thirty or sixty days against opportunity for some modifications and so forth to develop. If we vote this down at this point, then what is the timeframe with their? I guess it still depends on board supervisor.
Who goes to board supervisors next month?
Yeah.
With our recommendation. Now they could, now they could
Yeah.
Table it for sixty to ninety days, I think.
Even more than that, similar to with the apartments, they can request to defer until they feel like they have everything that you discussed here ready to roll. The board has one year from the day of application. So I think I got theirs, the last couple of days of November. So really, as long as the board votes before next November's board meeting, they can defer as many times as they wish to keep working on it.
Any more questions?
Well, I guess my bottom line is, I'm not against this if it was if it was cleaned up and modified and communicated and so forth. And that's kind of, that's kind of where I stand on it. Like.
That's all, that's up to all, totally in their lap. I'm making a motion to just deny this right here, because it's confusing.
And he seconded it? They would have to clean it up.
They gotta clean it up.
But I will say that they had more information this time on a solar farm than we had on the last solar farm. I will grant that to them. And the other question I had before we vote on this thing is, there's a part in here that says fire and safety, security. What would entail if something happened? It says, you know, to de-energize this thing, would it be local fire or EMS personnel? Does it take a lot of people if something happened like that? Or I mean, it's not like live electricity like out there, like a lightning bolt. I assume if, say a tornado hit it or God forsaken, somebody gets a shotgun and goes out there and starts blasting them suckers apart. And I, I mean, I'm not saying this is a county, this ain't a middle city. But I mean, you know, hunters might have a stray bullet. I'm, I'm, I'll top my head now. But that was a concern of mine too on another question is, what does that entail or, you know? I mean, I guess it'd be no different than a regular substation blowing transformers. Pretty hot place.
Yeah, on the, on the fire thing, I mean.
Really, nothing hard to burn, is it?
Yeah, the components are not flammable. I mean, it's, I think maybe some of the coating and the wiring could burn, but that's not gonna really go anywhere. So we, we do work with like fire departments to make sure they have access in case something happened, you know, someone was on the site checking on it. But it's not really a risk of fire. And then with the hunting, I think we would think we probably get on at least one end and have our fence, have a little bit more space to make sure.
Well, I'm just, you'd be more likely to get damaged by rough fire or grass fire going through there than you would be anything else.
Any more questions? Discussion? Motion's made to deny in second, duly second, the way we have it in front of us. Are y'all in favor, ready to vote?
Yeah.
We'll go around the table, because she's gonna wanna put it down. And Richard?
I think we need to deny it.
No.
John?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Remember your last meeting? No. I still know what we know right now.
So what did you say?
Well, I don't know. You do get a vote. Everybody gets a vote.
Was everybody?
Everybody's no, except you and Travis. Travis is not here. And it'll be up to the board supervisors to review it. I hate to tell you this, but we may have another one coming. Not this one, but I know. So just think about it. We got two more things we gotta vote on.
These are quick.
Yeah. Go to the new business sections, tab seven. Oh, here, seven. Yes. We've got to determine what a funeral home is.
Sorry, guys.
I think it's just, it's all the, what's down there, what is established as a funeral home? I don't know.
Yeah.
What brought this up? Okay. Give her some time.
So as you can see, you know, ones are already listed as a fiber rate use in B1. However, we had an inquiry about adding crematory services to our funeral home. So the attorney and I went to look at the definition and realized we didn't have one. So we didn't know if that was something that was included or not. So we looked at other localities to see how they handled it, and they put crematories as an accessory use to a funeral home. So essentially, adopting this would allow crematories as an accessory use only where funeral homes are already in existence. So you wouldn't have crematories popping up next door to your house randomly. It would only be where funeral homes already are. And I've deep dived into this and spoke with the person wanting to do this. And there would be virtually no noise, smell, smoke, any of that technology now with those is pretty insane. So it would not, would not be intrusive to the neighbors.
Well, they don't even be wanting, do they?
We have a crematory up the street from our office, and it still puts on.
It was just smoke.
To go face them.
But it still does.
Yeah, I know where it is.
So that was the necessity to add it because we didn't know crematory elsewhere.
Okay. What's your pleasure on that?
Make a motion, we approve the chain. Second.
Any more discussion? Long as you don't put it in the backyard. All in favor of motion, making no but saying aye. All opposed, same say. No, what a funeral home, yeah, a crematory. Second one, amendment for touring, tasting, and retail sales.
For distillery.
Of distillery.
Yes. So also in B1 business, microbreweries with tourist tastings and retail sales are permitted by right. Similarly to the crematorium, we received an inquiry about locating a micro distillery within the county, but our ordinance didn't address it at all, only breweries. After discussing the existing zoning ordinance with the county attorney, it was determined that micro brewery doesn't cover distilleries or wineries, obviously. And wineries are, for the most part, covered by tourism, however, distilleries are not. Therefore, it was recommended by the county attorney that distilleries with tourist tastings and retail sales become its own separate use. Being that microbreweries are similar and are permitted by right in B1, I propose having
You realize distilleries have been here for a long time, it's not legal.
What's your pleasure? I make a motion to approve. Any more discussion? All in favor, making no but saying aye. All opposed, same say. The motion carries. Uh, let's see, back to the agenda. Anyone else know of any other new business? I will say on our, on our comments, we met up, you go Monday to CIP. There was a lot of money that wanted handouts. What we did is just high, medium, low, and it goes to board supervisors that will come to our meeting in January. For those high, low, and medium. That's the only thing I have, other than I guess in January, well, elect officers at that.
Yes.
Now, y'all wanna do something different.
Yeah, so January, the organization will be getting the CIP, and then the day we post solar farms.
All right. Anyone else have any? And it may be a solar farm behind that one too, so.
Yep.
They're stair stepping pretty quick.
They sensed weakness from me, and we're like, yes, we're coming now, I know, but it's been a lot.
We'd like, I just want you to make aware of that, you know, don't be surprised now, next November, we're going down. But if no one else knows anything else, I appreciate you coming out. We certainly appreciate all you've done for up here, on the mission.
I'm gonna miss y'all.
You can always come, you can always come. Go get the vote, though.